Welcome to our November the fifth, two thousand and twelve special meeting. Call order and stand for the pleasure of each of you, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Who will call in, clerk?
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Born? Yes, sir.
Grantzer?
Yes.
Pat?
Here.
Staken?
Here.
Tovol?
Present. How the yes fits.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to item D, discussion regarding joint resolution for local control airport authority. This is going to be more of a workshop for the trustees to get some probably, some answers to some questions, which I know they probably have, and the general public to find out the status at this time, where we are and why we are where we are. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Wallace, our administrator. He's been deeply engrossed in this situation. So, Mr. Wallace, it's yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Mr. Wallace, may I just say, many people do not know what the iron ring is. Can you hear that word? Could you just explain it for a moment? You might.
I think we can explain it after we go through this.
Okay. Sir? I think maybe for the record, I'd like to read the proposed joint resolution. This will appear on the November fourteenth board meeting. It is a joint resolution of the necessity for a locally controlled airport authority for the South Suburban Airport. Whereas Eastern Will County has been the targeted site for the construction of a third regional airport to service the Chicago metropolitan area since nineteen eighty-nine, and whereas the principle of local control has been clouded by self-appointed stakeholder groups outside the Eastern Will County area that have defined a local control as either Will County control, South Suburban control, regional control, Chicago included, or State of Illinois control. And whereas the mayors and village boards of Beecher, Crete, Moni, and Piutone, which have been collectively known as the Iron Ring Communities, have always believed that local control must include representatives appointed by each of the Iron Ring Communities. And whereas the communities around O'Hare did not have any local control, and as a result, their communities were so negatively impacted by the expansion of the O'Hare Airport that their only alternative was to advocate for the construction of another airport seventy-five miles away. And whereas each and every local government has the duty and obligation to plan for the future of their communities and to eliminate and/or mitigate negative impacts which significant projects or life-changing events may impose. And whereas positions, as stated in this joint resolution, are neutral as to the need for a third regional airport for Chicago. And whereas if the decision is made to construct the airport, the Iron Ring Communities must be provided the assurance that any negative impacts to the quality of life of the adjacent area resulting from the operation of the airport facility and its associated developments be mitigated to the greatest extent possible. And whereas there is a collective view among the Iron Ring Communities that if the airport is constructed, it must be operated successfully and be supported by long-term objectives for growth and changing technology if it is to remain a compatible neighbor. And whereas, since two thousand, the positions of the Iron Ring Communities were developed after hundreds of hours of meetings and deliberations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the village of Moni, Will County, Illinois, that it is on record as supporting an airport authority having the following composition if an airport is to be constructed in Eastern Will County: a nine-member board consisting of one member from each of the villages of Beecher, Crete, Moni, and Piutone, appointed by the village presidents with the consent of their respective board trustees; one member appointed by Will County Executive with the consent of the Will County Board; one member appointed by the Kankakee County Chairman with the consent of the Kankakee County Board; one member appointed by the Township Supervisor of South Cook County bordering Will County; and two members appointed by the Governor of the State of Illinois with one of these appointments being a resident of Will County. And be it further resolved that the village of Moni supports the adoption of the airport authority legislation with the previously described board composition concurrent with the adoption of the development district legislation in addition to the attached exhibit detailing our concerns with both pieces of the legislation as it currently is written. That is the proposed resolution that will be on the board agenda for November fourteenth. How we got there, I'm not going to read this, but we have a position paper formulated by all the Iron Ring Communities collectively. You may have heard the term ALNAK, where Congressman Jesse Jackson Jr. was pushing a governance plan and board, which was Abraham Lincoln National Airport, ALNAK Corporation, or I can't think of the last word for that. But basically, that harbored municipalities far to the north, Bensonville, Elk Grove Village, I believe, was part of that as well, and provided no input from local municipalities that would have the greatest impact on local municipalities. So obviously, the Iron Ring Communities were, are very concerned about a plan that doesn't allow for local input and local control, seeing how this project will be, if it comes to fruition, would be in our backyards. So this position paper gives a little history. It does explain about, you know, where we've been. It explains about the development district, the formulation of that, and coordinated land use planning, which is part of that development district, as well as revenue sharing. And then, the next part of this plan is to provide a letter to Senator Toye Hutchinson, who is willing to pick up the Senate Bill twenty-six fifty-one, which is the Airport Authority Bill, Governance Bill, and then Senate Bill twenty-six fifty-two, which is the Development District Bill. She's willing to pick that up and move forward, move that legislation forward in an effort to provide local control to the Iron Ring Communities and those that would be the most affected by this should an airport be built in the future. So with that being said, you may ask yourself why University Park isn't part of the Iron Ring. It's because they are a part of ALNAK. And until they dissolve that, those authorities that allow them to be a part of ALNAK, they are not a part of the Iron Ring network here. At that point, also included in the letter to Senator Hutchinson is our comments on both of the legislative bills, the Airport Authority as well as the Development District Bill, concerns that the, that our local municipalities have with those bills as they are written. We're hoping that Senator Hutchinson will take that advice, reintroduce amendments to those bills that reflect, take care of some of our concerns, and ultimately move these, these two bills forward concurrently with one another. There may have been, you may have heard, or you may be asking yourself, where does the county lie in all this? And early on, we've had, we had many meetings with County Executive Miken when he was in office, and quite frankly, we haven't had a lot other than, a lot of communication with Will County other than, I believe that they have, the county has met with the governor on at least one occasion that we were unaware of, and quite frankly, we just didn't feel that we were getting the representation that we deserve on the eastern side of the county, and more specifically with those communities that were bordering the airport. So, with that being said, we stuck together through all of that. There was an attempt to divide us. At one point, the village of Moni was pressured, I'm gonna say within the last year and a half, because we are a home-rule unit of government, to join the ALNAK plan and abandon the Iron Ring plan. And I'm proud to say that, you know, we stuck together, and I think that it's all for the benefit of our local constituency. And the last thing that I'd like to say before we get into answering any questions is that the local plan here is really, it's about the governance of the airport. That's what this resolution is indicating. It's all about the governance. It's, as it's stated in the resolution, it's a neutral position on whether the airport is needed. It's a neutral position on whether you support it or don't support it. That is not the issue that we're trying to push forward. What we are trying to push forward is to put ourselves in a position of control, having a say, if you will, not total control of the airport, but having a say in its operations should an airport be built. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would acquiesce to the trustees and yourself for any dialogue.
Well, I'm gonna turn it over to the trustees. I'd like you to use proper proper coffee concerning each other. Take some time, these questions need to be answered to you guys, because we've been involved for quite a while in this. We pretty much, Mr. Wallace and myself, understand the detail of this. Don't hold nothing back, because obviously, also, this information's going out to the public. So whoever wants to go first, let's just do it.
I'll go first. During the last administration with Mr. O'Donnell was here, I was able to have the opportunity to sit in with the Iron Ring for a lot of the occasions that Mr. O'Donnell couldn't make it to. So I do have an idea with the development district. That was one thing they pushed through once before. And with the, this new legislation's going through, I mean, it's, as they say, that we're really not, you know, I could careless if it's built or not, but if it's built in our backyard, I think, you know, as it states here, that we, we need control. I really won't have any questions. I basically understand it, since I've been, I've been at previous meetings pertaining to this, so at this time, I won't have any questions.
Mr. Pop?
I can't say that even if I did read it all, which I did, I read, read the bulk of it, and I don't remember probably having it. It's so detailed. What, what I did understand, and what I understand from Mr. Wallace said, is that this is strictly written by four different communities with input from each community's lawyers, and their brass, if I may say it that way, their mayors, their administrators, and with all that in mind, everything I've read, I think it's a wonderful idea, and I don't see a problem at all.
Mr. Pop, I would like to make a correction, Trustee Pop, and that would be that the Senate bills themselves were developed in Springfield.
Correct. I know that.
Okay, yeah. And it is only our reply to the, through the letter to Senator Hutchinson, that we have some concerns with specific areas of those bills. It would be in Springfield that those bills might be amended if Senator Hutchinson chooses to push that forward. So just wanted to make clear that we didn't develop these bills, but we certainly developed the concept behind the--
No, this except for--
Exactly.
That's my point.
And I think that's one thing that's important that I skipped, and I'm sorry to jump back in here, but is that all along, the governor has been, our current governor, has been calling for regional consensus. And finding that regional consensus, the definition of that, has been like trying to hit a moving target. But, you know, ALNAK was, you know, they pushed their plan forward first, and not knowing what regional consensus was, and we have been forever attempting to narrow down the definition of regional consensus. And based on what we have received from the governor's office via Senator Hutchinson is that we put forth the nine-member board as a good, our concern, or our definition of regional consensus, because it gives appointments to the governor, the executive of the county, you know, both Kankakee County and Cook County have representation, as well as the local municipalities. So we felt that we have reached and attained regional consensus, so that's all I have to say. Sorry, board.
I might also inform the other municipalities, I bring this up before their board also, the same resolution here.
Yes, absolutely. We just happen to handle it in a manner that is conducive to our board operations, and, you know, the mayor felt strongly that it should come out in a special meeting and not be just on the agenda the night that we're expecting it to be passed, which is, you know, probably a wise thing to do, so that we can answer any unanswered questions. But the goal is to have all of this passed by the four Iron Ring Communities, so that we can then sign the letter for Senator Hutchinson, and that this can be moved forward, and with the potential of that being brought up in the veto session. That's the goal.
Which I believe through January. Somewhere in that timeframe.
I would concur with that.
Are you done, sir?
Yes.
You want to say you do for last, you want to go out?
First of all, I commend the mayor and the administrator for not falling prey to the easy temptation of participating in ALNAK specifically. I had some questions regarding the Will County plan, if you will, compared to the ALNAK plan. Last time I talked to Senator Hutchinson, she assured me that if there were to be an airport, which I know she's in favor, but if there were to be an airport, that it would not be the ALNAK plan. But that leaves some question, because I recall, and I just, I ended up going online and trying to find, because getting ahold of a politician in the last few days is not been easy. Back in March, the county board had issued a notice of some sort here, that basically they are reaffirming their request to the governor to cease and desist the negotiations with ALNAK in favor of a Will County governance, but unfortunately, what I haven't found what their governance is, other than to be directed by the legislature in Springfield, which lacks clarity, specific clarity that is. So I'm looking this over here, and I'm very pleased, not that we're taking a position necessarily in favor of or against, because even with the last referendum, we had, I believe, the village of Moni, the precincts represented, the village of Moni were up two to one against the airport. The township itself leaned ever so slightly in favor of it. But not deciding necessarily whether, because it's not a, it's up to the FAA, it's up to Springfield, whether it's actually gonna happen or not. But if it is gonna happen, I remember when Debbie Howerson was the state senator at the time, having a conversation with her in regards to the fact that if it's just strictly an issue of Will County governance, I really don't think that if you have somebody in Joliet, or Bowling Run, or Pinefield, that they really care anymore about what happens over here in Moni, or Piutone, or Beecher, or Crete. It's irrelevant to that. You know, we're gonna have the same disinterest in our well-being as a group of communities as you can expect from somebody from Chicago who might wanna label us some unkind labels as things that don't live there, that just blow down the street. The point here is, I believe that this is a huge step, and I know it's been on the table now for quite some time. I believe there's been some public misperception of what the Iron Ring was. It would, I believe, from the people I've talked to in Cook County, the communities in there, that they treat it more as an iron fist, kind of an attitude of antagonism against the airport entirely. It's good to see that it's not really taking a position in favor of or against as much as it's saying, if it is gonna happen, that we want to have open governance, predominantly.
Sure. And Trustee Farquhar, I can say that the Iron Ring Communities have long waited for the proper governance plan, or a governance plan that included those communities which would be the most impacted. And for lack of that coming forth, it was time for us to, because you are correct, that public perception was, and even from the legislative standpoint, the perception was that the Iron Ring stood for nothing but, you know, totally against the airport. And really, you know, we are, we are intelligent enough to realize that the ability, whether or not that airport is built, is a decision that lies with the FAA and the State of Illinois as the stakeholders, property holder there. But the real governance of that was still in the air, and again, because nothing was forthcoming, we felt that it was time to now move forward, and we had met on several occasions with Senator Hutchinson and voiced those concerns. And so that is, you know, moving forward, and we, you know, we have interests in, lately we've gotten pressured from Will County CED, and, you know, with Mr. Grueling out there wanting to know our position, and it's fine. I think that is welcome pressure, and I think that the Iron Ring Communities welcome that, because now at least someone is asking, what are our stance on this? Because even our own county, we were viewed as, you know, totally anti-airport, and that's not what this is about, and we don't wanna cloud that issue. And we needed to make it clear to them that we're not here about for the airport or against the airport. We're concerned because we don't have a say in that. But what we are concerned about is, should it come, do we have the ability to represent our constituents? And that's what this resolution is all about, so.
Trustee Farquhar, I may point out one thing. One of the biggest changes between this governance and ALNAK's governance was Moni being home rule was the only one invited to sit at the table. We felt that collectively, all of the municipalities that's impacted should sit at that table. So that's one of the, that's really one of the highlights in here, I don't know if you can pick it up on there? Because if it comes, and they're landing those big birds in your backyard, I think you should have a heck of a lot to say about it.
So, and I think also, and this is a key part of point, if you will, and that has to do with the development districts, and I think that's crucial as well. One little more explanation if I could on that, and how the sharing of definition and benefits, if you will, with the tax base and things of that sort, with the development district, how does that actually work? Because if we're the only home-rule community, then we have a dear couple of things that we can implement within the village itself, pretending to sales tax and things of that sort. So if you're getting into the development district, how does that come into play as far as, are you, I just want better explanation.
I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think, if it's, we can exercise our home-rule benefit on taxes that's not within our corporate limits.
Well, were our corporate limits not, I would imagine that we would still move our corporate capital up to or inclusive of whatever area was relevant of our pretty finite areas with the other communities.
Sure. And we'll eventually get to that point, but I think to answer your question, our, any taxes that are imposed due to our home-rule community standing is not part of the, that's off the table for the development district, okay? It's simply based on property taxes and on new developments, not existing, not anything like that, just new developments that are within the district.
And that district would be what, a certain, like, additional ring, if you will, around the footprint of the airport?
Absolutely, and it would include, you know, the towns of Beecher, Piutone, Moni, and, you know, we suspect ultimately, University Park will be on board, you know, and, you know, as they should be, but it's, it's so that we can control the land growth, put the proper growth where it needs to be, and so it does not pit, the whole idea here is that it does not, it helps to avoid a large development pitting one community against the other for a location. Okay? So when you enter the development district, it's, it's all about the communities, you know, collectively, together, and what is best for our area here, not just what, you know, who's gonna give you the best deal. And so it kinda helps to avoid that, and that's the intent of--
But it would be, the development district would not incorporate, let's say, all the way over the other side of Ridgeland and things like that necessarily? It would only be a certain distance from the airport?
Uh, yes, yes, it is only a certain distance. I mean, it goes over to Ridgeland--
I didn't see the map.
Yeah, there, and we're, we're actually looking for that. I think it was referenced as R three or something in there. We're actually trying to get that, so that we can see if that's a current version, if you will. But it's to prohibit, I mean, you know, if things, if things were to pick up, you know, twenty years down the road, you don't wanna be building a, you know, twenty-story hotel in the path of a runway, should that happen, you know? Or in the path of a future runway. Let's say that that, you know, if there is an airport, it's gonna start out small, but if it eventually develops out, so you try and prohibit those things, it's for, through the development district. And each, each community, of course, has representation, you know, on that development district and things of that nature, so.
So the development district theoretically would include the area that at the time this was developed, did not know for certain where Eliana was gonna be slated?
Correct.
So now that needs to take into account some of that, perhaps?
Possibly, yes, yes. And some of the concern was, you know, to be frank with you, some of the concern was that we don't want an airport authority that is going to operate the airport and then ultimately operate facilities that are not directly needed for the support of an airport. In other words, they have this boundary, and they pull a hotel in the boundary. That's not where it belongs. It belongs out in the development district, so that the communities can share in that development growth, because ultimately, we're going to, you know, we're going to be impacted by that. That's one thing that the development district is allowing for.
And the development district itself is not gonna be sharing of sales taxes or even a percentage of those--
No. It's strictly down to a minimal percentage of property tax, yeah. And it, I believe it's stated out in there, but it's hard to comprehend that without taking an actual tax bill, taking the percentage of what that is, and working it out, but it's a, it's a good formula that works for all communities, because we-- But it's a, it's a good formula that works for all communities, because we do have some variation, you know, in our communities with Moni being home rule and certain communities are developed a little further along than other communities. That's why it has no bearing on existing developments at all or anything.
Part of the reason why I brought that up, on this last page before you get into the actual legislation here, it's the one that has the rooms for the signature for the board of mayors. It references page 31, line 10, related to some definition even pertaining to local sales tax and all that, is what caught my eye.
Right. And that is, if this, if we can implement that, if that's what we want to do, then sales tax is only on the state portion.
Okay.
Okay? It has no bearing on home rule. Only the 1% non-home rule local sales tax, as defined by the Illinois Compendio statutes, should be shared. So if we move forward with that, you know, anything under the home rule law is not included in that.
So our villages still have the ability to annex all the way up to the point of which we've got a pretty rules with the villages?
Absolutely. This has nothing, the Development District does not regulate annexation, because initially, unincorporated areas would be included in the Development District.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, sir.
I don't have any questions. My only question was answered by Mr. Wallace's statement at the beginning, that we're not taking a position on this, we're just putting our hands in it so that we can have say, if it does come. So that was my only question. And I'm glad they're wanting to get rid of ALNAK. That's just personally, that's all.
Mr. Horn?
I just needed clarification on one thing, this Development District, does that district have the power to levy taxes?
Let me go back in my memory bank here.
That's what I'm, I just, that's why I need clarification.
Yeah. At our last meeting with the Iron Ring administrators, the answer to that would be no. And if I'm wrong, I will correct, I will certainly let you know. But it's not our intent to, or it's not the intent of the Development District to levy those taxes. What they're doing, that's why it's included in here for a percentage of the improved property, that's where the Development District would get some of its finances to operate. And at one point early on, there was legislation or a bill, legislation that included the opportunity to levy taxes, and that was thought to be a, you know, an automatic kill on the bill. That was not the intent of the Development District from the get-go.
So we would not, our residents, or the residents of the Iron Ring communities would not see another line item on their tax bill for...
Development District. That is correct. Where they would get their funding is from the, a portion of the real estate, the real estate taxes paid by new developments.
Okay.
Okay? And it would be, you know, the normal taxes that are paid. It wouldn't be a line item on their bill either. It would be, okay, this is, you know, the development, this is the property tax of that, and the municipalities would have to give that up.
Okay? Very good.
Yes.
No further questions from this side?
Can I ask you about, so would that have any hindrances to us having TIF districts, new TIF districts in different areas that would also be an overlapping portions of that? And if so, or I'm sorry, if not, you know, what's to keep the communities from potentially competing, if you will, with the TIF districts in order to try to acquire the, I just wanted to know what the...
I believe that the, it's my understanding that the taxing of any new development is for any new development, no matter where it lies. So if it happens to be in a TIF district, we're agreeing to that portion of a new development. But again, it's, that burden is not passed along, it's our participation. So we would receive the tax money just like normal, and we would divvy that up. And if you'll bear with me, I'll try and find that, that specific language in here. Take me a minute.
And go ahead.
While he's looking for that, would it be worthwhile to simultaneously send this to Senator Hutchinson, but also send it to the Will County Board for purposes of identifying this as a specific plan that they would potentially also back?
Well, I probably personally feel there's going to be a couple bumps in the road. I don't know how the Will County Board is going to deal with it. I can't say how they're going to deal with this governance. Everybody involved has some idea how it should pretty much benefit them. We're just looking for protection from incoming to have control. As far as the Will County, I really don't know exactly what they're asking for. This is what we're proposing.
Right.
As far as the governor, I think Mr. Wallace pointed out, it's like hitting a moving target. Every time you get a memo, it's changed. So we finally sat down and collectively put together a decision that we can live with.
These are a couple of, this is like one of these is from 2008, one is from 2012. You know, they're actually taking a pro-airport position, same as me.
This is true, but I don't even know if they've had overlays after these.
I don't know that they have specifically. I think the March one was the one of this year, and they finished 12.
Mr. Ann? Yes, sir. I just would like to say, Trustee Farquhar, in response to that, the carbon copies that you see at the bottom of the letter going to Senator Hutchinson, we're kind of, the Iron Ring is kind of taking our lead from her on who to copy on this, as opposed to go off in different directions. She's trying to move this forward on our behalf. She has time and again stated that, if you will, she has our backs. And this is, this is the time to show whether she does or doesn't, then, you know, I believe that she'll be true to her word.
I personally want to commend the mayor and administrator for working this through and staying on top of this. This is something we need to reaffirm, and I'm grateful for Senator Hutchinson, her efforts to keep us in the loop and keep us in a point of having influence over what happens in our backyard.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Wallace is counting. Any of the new questions come up? Do you guys just want to let these questions?
My only question is, is there anybody on the House side that is working on this? Is there any other, are we in conjunction with anybody else? I know what you said tomorrow, and things happen, and who else is ready to step up and move this on in our favor too?
Yeah, and the carbon copy.
Yeah, and the carbon copy there, you see Anthony DeLuca and Representative Lisa Dugan as well, and Senator Hutchinson has been working closely with both of those. As a matter of fact, Representative Dugan and Senator Hutchinson attended a meeting at the same time. They were both present for a meeting at the Will County CED, you know, trying to answer questions and laying out their intent of moving this forward.
If I recall, Senator Hutchinson is actually part of the Infrastructure Committee for the state.
I believe so.
So that she has local relevance, and she also has statewide oversight of this particular aspect.
That's correct. Trustee Horn, in section 70, it says special assessments, and this is where it's referred to. The district may levy, assess, and collect special assessments, except with respect to property that is not subject to special assessments, on new industrial and commercial development. So, and it's, give me a moment, and I'll find that, that property tax portion of it. Maybe I will. Yes, on page 31 of the second bill, that would be Bill 2652, page 31, line five starts, "The amount of revenue subject to revenue sharing is as follows," and it's a corporate ad valorem, "property tax and new commercial and industrial property within the district shall be shared among the member entities up to a limit of the first 0.25% of the member entity's corporate levy. One half of the new local sales tax shall be shared among the member entities." And recall that the sales tax only applies to the state 1% sales tax. Anything that is garnered via home rule is not subject to this.
Ladies and gentlemen, a read-through. Any more questions given out now? If they have no more, I'd like a motion to adjourn. Second roll call, please.
Horn?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Paff?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out. I hope you get a little knowledge, just a little bit for these guys to head digest this kind of quickly.